Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here at City Hall, February the 20th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Here at the City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street. The City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Senior Pastor Mark Roth with the Acton Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. All rise, please.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we, as we gather here tonight, we seek your wisdom, your truth, and your presence. God, so many things to pray for in this day. Lord, all of our hearts are heavy for those lives that were taken in Florida and the families that are left in the wake of so much pain and questioning and hurt. And, Lord, as they cry out, we pray that you would walk with them, that you would cry with them, that you would grieve with them, and, Lord, that you would start them on the path of healing. And, Lord, at the same time, we pray that you would give us, as leaders, the wisdom to know what to do in the coming days to prevent such violence and such evil. Lord, we particularly pray for our schools here in Granbury. We pray for their safety. And, Lord, I pray that, whether it be explicitly or implicitly, that you would give us the wisdom as to how to deliver the message that life is precious. So, Lord, we pray protection also for our kids and our schools. And, Lord, make us wise, not only as a community, but as a nation as well. And, Lord, we praise tonight. We just, not only do we rejoice who you are, but we rejoice for those who protect us and take care of us. Lord, we thank you for our policemen, our firemen, our EMTs, all of those who sacrificed so much, see so many things, clean up so many messes on our behalf. Lord, we pray that you would protect their hearts, their minds. God, give them healing whenever they have gone through trauma. And, Lord, bless them. And, Lord, we lift up our city as a whole. Lord, may we do business with integrity. May we govern ourselves with integrity as well. May your values be our values. May your truth be our truth. So, Lord, have your hand on us. We love you. We need you. We invite you here. We pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state under God, one
Folks, tonight, we're going to be excusing ourselves in the executive session, the first part of the meeting, but I would like to make an announcement that we have removed item number 13 on the deliberation agenda. That item being discussed and considered approving the amendment of the visit Granbury Corporation Physical Year 2017/18 budget. So, that way, if folks are here for that particular item, we will not be discussing that item tonight. So, at this time, I'll now declare...
Let's see if Mr. Dores is here.
Who?
Robert Dores.
Is Robert Dores here?
He's on the place of his office.
Is he going to be here?
Yes, sir. He will be here soon.
Okay. Well, that's why we're going to break for executive session. So, if...
You want to step down, try to call in?
Go ahead. Well, with that said, we will not break into executive session right now. We'll go ahead and start our consent agenda. And, like I said, item number 13 on the deliberation has been removed from the items there. So, we were going to our consent agenda right now. The first item being considered approving City Council Meeting Minutes of February 6, 2018 Regular Meeting, and a consider the Granbury... The second one being considered the Granbury Housing Authority's request. The third one being considered approving the Work Order Number 12 for Engineering Service with Hipson Hobbs. The fourth one being considered approving a memorandum of agreement with the two-wheel tours and fund permitting operation of the guided Segway tours within the city park, trail. And, number five, considering approving an agreement for the Waterside Sports of Granbury City Beach, which they're just renewing their contract there. And, number six, considering a FIA 18-01 by and between Cardinal Woods LLC. Council, if you recall, we had that one on the last agenda, and they have come and identified, I believe, the right-of-way's there. So, those are the items we have on the consent agenda. Are there any items, Council, you'd like to discuss or to pull off the consent agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to pull off item number four, so we could get a little more information on that in open session, please.
Very well. Item number four will move down to the deliberation agenda, be the first one on the deliberation agenda. Council, any more discussion or any more items on there that you'd like to remove or discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda less item number four.
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on those items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved less item number four. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. That first item being item number four, consider approving a memorandum of agreement with the two-wheel tours and fund permitting the operations of guided Segway tours within the city parks and the trail system. I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, see if he has a staff report on this one.
You bet. As reflected in your packet, we do have a company that's wanting to start a Segway tour business here. Under the federal law, segways are not listed as a motorized vehicle, and so they're, under those guidelines, they're able to operate on our sidewalks or anywhere else, wheelchair or any type of assistive device would be available. I do have Allen, I mean, Aaron McLean here, Parks Director, has worked closely with the gentleman to develop that agreement. Our city attorney and the development, the business developer, has worked through many details to put that agreement in place, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Council, have you got any questions concerning this particular item here? I know one of the questions we had, and I don't know if Aaron's... Aaron, you available there? Where the staging or where these segways would be located? And I think they plan on having them most of the, during events and things like that. Is that true, Aaron?
Well, they said any weekend or weekdays or week evenings. They wanted to use our park, parking lots, where the service center's located, and the swimming pool area. They just wanted to have an access to where they can bring the units, and they have to have a training time that's required before they let people loose on these Segway units. So, they need an area...
Good idea.
...to train. And we have parking lots at the soccer field. We have parking lots at the service center, the pool area, or even Hewlett Park Overflow Parking has been designated as an alternate location for these training areas to take place before they, you know, take off down the trail system.
So, they have all their own insurance and all that, everything that's required or something like that?
That's correct. They met all our requirements.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
So, they'll just stage in different areas depending on the events going on in town?
That's correct. If we have soccer tournaments, for instance, or baseball tournaments, we wouldn't have room for them at those facilities. Therefore, they would use Hewlett Park for their staging areas. That was one of the questions. They wanted advanced, more advanced notice than sometimes I am allowed to not be able to use certain areas, so we came up with Hewlett Park as an alternate location. And, of course, if there's, the conference center's using Hewlett Park for overflow, then they would not be able to use that facility. They would use soccer or baseball parking.
But they'll always coordinate that with you?
That's correct.
Okay.
And in turn, if I know of when our tournament dates are, I'll give that information to them, so they'll know to go to Hewlett. It would be rare, but it may be on occasion that all three parking lots are going to be occupied, and then I would let them know that, you know, that this weekend, we've got these three events going on, so we cannot spare the room.
Right. Thank you.
So, there'll be somebody on site to be monitoring these all the time for complaints or whatever?
Well, we won't have staff monitoring...
No, not staff.
Yeah.
They'll have, their people, right?
They will, yes, they will be. They'll be training. They have to be with the crew, so they won't just train them and then say, "We'll see y'all in an hour."
Oh, gotcha.
They will be, it's a guided tour is what they're wanting to have. Yes.
Very good.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
Thank you. Two things. It says on the trails, they're talking about our bike trail?
Yes, sir. Our hiking bike trail.
Okay. And then, secondly, I know they've got $2 million worth of insurance, but this may be a question to our city attorney, but you can get hurt on those things. Are we liable in any way?
No, the policy holds us harmless. That was the whole, that was one of the holdups with the drafting of the agreement, was they take out an indemnification policy for us.
Okay.
We're out of it. That's their issue.
Unless they sue for more than $2 million.
Potentially, but it's not our operation, it's their operation.
Council, any more questions concerning segways? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
So, move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Sorget. Any more discussion, Council? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Thank you, Council.
We'll be here in a little bit. Oh, we can? Okay. Well, our guest is going to be here sometime, so we'll go and go ahead and just go through the agenda, and he'll probably end up being at the end of the agenda there. So, we'll move right through here. Our next item is Council to receive engineering reports from the CTM GT Granbury LLC and take possible action on this said report. It has two sections to this, accepting and approving a comprehensive study and consider approval of the Amendment Number Three to the existing comprehensive development agreement. Chris, I'm going to call upon you to start with, or and see if, does Scott have a staff report on this?
No. Thank you. What I've been told is B is being removed from the agenda.
Okay.
So, we don't need to consider that. But before we start, I would like to say that this project's been going on quite some time. The agreements that were in place were adopted back in 2013, and the developer has been working to do a comprehensive study. Those studies were completed last fall. We sent communication back that our engineer had reviewed those studies, and now we're to the point where we were looking for them to come and make a presentation to the council so that we would be able to know that we're moving forward the way the development agreement plans, and that we would be successful in them doing their first phase of the development. So, found out on Tuesday, we needed to put this on the agenda, so apologize for the short notice and the information coming out late to you, but that's kind of where we're at. And these folks have been really gracious working with us on the airport project. I'll just say that the city was able to acquire a five-acre tract on the behalf of Brazos Electric in a land swap that allowed us to move forward with the airport project, relocating of the substation, and they've been very, very helpful in that. So, they've also, you know, worked through, behind the scenes for a long time to pull this together. It's a big project. As y'all know, it's over 2,000 acres altogether, and this is the first phase that they've worked on. So, they've done the comprehensive study for the water and for the wastewater and the drainage for the entire 2,000-plus acres. And then on the traffic, we allowed them to do the traffic impact analysis for Phase One for the residential only, and that seemed to make sense at the time because of the variables of where roads would go eventually, if there were any changes whatsoever. So, at this time, Mr. Hackett is here and Mr. Doucette with the engineering firm. I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Chris. My name's Ken Hackett. Most of you know me. I know you and consider you friends, and John Doucette from Austin, Texas is with us. He is our engineer of record. He's been with us over this almost decade-long process to get to this point. Tonight, we bring to you a kind of a background presentation, too, because we know several members of the council have not been participated in this thing whatsoever, so we thought some history would help. We're here to submit one thing, actually. Now, we're going to remove one item because it was causing confusion, the amendment to the comprehensive plan, and then just submit the TIA study and studies, comprehensive studies, that will be approved tonight. We appreciate it. Knox Ranch began some time ago with the purchase by Merdad Moyeti of Centurion American, the 2,000-acre Knox Ranch. We began a comprehensive development agreement with the city, as it is outside the city limits, and we agreed to an ETJ annexation of all of the ranch. Half of it was in, half of it was out. There you see the location of the ranch, just on your western border along 377. It also has frontage on 51. Down the middle of that track is a road named Meadowwood that kind of splits it into two projects. The western project, as you can see, here's some of the early land planning that was done. Now, this is very high-level planning, just routes in and out. You can see, oh, I'm not used to this panel, so look. Here we did an early study of just bringing traffic off of the extended loop if we ever, when that happens, and how the traffic would enter the traffic from, enter the project from 51 as well as 377. On the left there is one of our preliminary designs as to allocating land use. If it was inside the city, you would call that zoning, but as a development agreement, we call it land use because it's not fully annexed. And the reason for that is we have a mud district on this property that was part of the development agreement up front. So, first, let's discuss some of the issues behind the mud district. The mud district was formed because there was an existing mud district on this property when Centurion American bought the property. With an agreement with the city council at the time, we re-certified that mud district at the Texas Legislature, and it is now known as the Hood County Granbury Mud. I believe that will be the first mud ever inside the city of Granbury, eventually. It is not part of the city today, it's in the ETJ. By request of the city, the mud district was split up into four zones. This allows you to annex that zone, one zone at a time, when the time comes to annex the property. Generally, that's done when the bonds of the mud district are paid off, are nearly paid off, and the city sees an opportunity there to collect the property tax rather than the mud district tax. So, this breaks it up into four divisions, and those divisions changed from its original layout. If you can see on the left, the gray version, that is 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D are the four groups that would be annexed when that time comes. This could be as much as 20 years out. It could be sooner if development goes faster, but it usually, it usually relies on the amount of development within that zone. So, that division was done. We amended that slightly on the right-hand side, and that happened during, if you'll see the, if I can point this right. There is a change of roadways due to the TIA and due to the airport extension. So, we kind of gerrymandered that 1B. You see at the bottom of our page, I would certainly recommend we go back to the original plan on the left, once we reestablish the final road system in that area. I think it fits better with what we have today, but it's not necessary tonight to deal with that. Next, you have a phasing plan of west wind, that's a tentative name for the western side of Knox Ranch. It will be a horse-friendly, two-acre-plus minimum size residential development. The first phase in the colored section you'll see is where, when we speak of Phase One, that's where it will be. The gray area on the left was where Phase One was originally going to be, but that caused a lot of problems with the TIA. So, Centurion American and I and a few others in that group sat down, and Merdad asked me, "Where should we start developing?" And I said, "On the western side, where we have a demand in this marketplace for larger lots, and this is what it'll be. It'll be a two-acre lot." And we did, inside the amended development agreement, this area will not have sewer, where it's yellow. It's water-only by the city. The city will be the retail provider of all our water and sewer. That's the contract inside the development agreement, that you will be the retail provider, and not only that, you will provide inspections to all the housing, so it'll make sure that we're building to city standards and codes. What will be different is that we have implemented a process called Low Impact Standards, and what we're trying to do is minimize the water runoff and collect water rather than just dumping it in storm drains and concentrating that water. This allows us to clean up the water as it migrates across the property, and this is done almost exclusively in the hill country. And one of the reasons I chose, Doucette and Associates, they have a lot of experience in that category of developing properties in the hill country and the fringes of hill country, because he operates in Austin, Texas, and we know there's a lot of environmentalists in Austin, Texas. So, they have to watch those kind of things more carefully. So, if you look at the black outline, that is the, I don't think I got to it here. That black outline is some 330 acres of development. That will be our first phase. Do we have any questions so far?
Mr. Hackett, you said exclusively all the water. There's no wells for private use on these parks?
No. Our development agreement, as you might recall, allows private use for non-potable purposes.
Right.
Like if they have a horse or they can water their lawn. What we're trying to do is conserve city water.
Right.
We're trying to be conservationists. Now, the agreement does call for the residents to pay the 1.5 rate for the potable water. So, you're getting your out-of-city rate, Council, so don't worry, you're getting all the money you can. So, that's a good, I think, I would have rather seen it the other way, so that we wouldn't have a whole lot of individual wells out there, but that's what the council preferred, and we agreed to it. So, the water rate will be the 1.5 rate outside the city.
I think Mr. Allen's got a question.
You said you'd rather have just the city water and no wells?
Well, as a conservationist, price always means how you constrict consumers. So, if they were paying city water rates on all their water use, then they'd probably use less.
The mayor and I was on council, and I remember you actually asked for the one, the same as in the city.
I did.
Now, when it's all developed, is it goes to...
Mr. Allen, go ahead and speak into the mic here.
I'm sorry. Does that go to same as the city, or does it always stay 1.5?
No, I think once you annex, it goes to inside the city rate.
Yeah, but until then, it does not?
It does not.
Okay. And you said that you were going to use our sewer and water throughout the development, or this first one will be on aerobic systems or what?
The west wind development, the residential, calls for septic aerobic. There will not be central sewer on the western side. That was part of the original negotiation, because it was just sewer was so far away, it just wasn't cost-effective to do it, plus we agreed to two-acre minimums to the development for the western side.
But the rest of it will be?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anytime. Next, you see an exhibit that we're not going to vote on tonight. We asked this to be removed, to be amended. And what we were doing, and I thought it was a good idea at the time, but it turned out not to be such a good idea, because it caused some confusion, is to overlay the eastern side of the development with the status of interim holding. I thought that would be a normal segue into a voluntary annexation process, but it's deemed that it might have rezoned all of our properties within that section, so change the land use. So, we are removing that. We don't want to cause the confusion. It was just a thought of how to segue into voluntary annexation. So, since we're not doing that, we're removing that request tonight. But this does show you the final preliminary layout, land use plan, if you ignore the hatched lines on the eastern versus the western side. Again, the western side will be the first phase, and that will be with trails, parks, HOA centers. We're even planning on a cowboy church, an arena, those kind of things to enhance the quality of life in a horse-friendly development. So, it'll kind of mirror, if you've ever been out to Silverado in Parker County, very well-known, like development. We'll actually have riding trails. They don't. So, we'll use the easements and the drainage ways as riding trails, if people do want to have horses. Most people who have horses either have, are very aggressive with them, and they buy bigger tracks, so they probably won't be our main market. It's kind of like golfers that don't, who live on the golf course but don't play golf. They just like the green belt, and a lot of people like the seahorses. So, we do expect horses being, and horse riding be a common amenity in the western side, and that's why we named, our preliminary named it west wind. The rest of it shows what is important today is the alignment of the new, our future extension of 567. We hope to have that done in the near future, to try to provide through our development process, identifying that right-of-way with Tax Doc, because we need to develop grades so we don't do something that fights with the grade that Tax Doc would establish as the grade for that right-of-way. So, we will get with them again and determine how they would preliminary design that extension of that right-of-way over to 51, and I think that's a good point to bring, because as you see at the top of, oop, didn't mean to do that. Which way did I go? Wrong way. At the top of that, yeah. Yeah. They aren't doing it now, so we won't worry about it. That carve-out of white land is what we donated to the city for the airport extension and the runway. I think that was some 32 acres, Chris, wasn't it, something in that range? So, that was a pretty important intersection for us, but of course, it was a necessary evil to get everything else done. So, that's the 32 acres we donated to the city to get their airport project, and I guess y'all use that as some in-kind contribution. Do we have any questions up until this point on the comprehensive land use plan?
Mr. Hackett? I'm sorry.
Councilman Allen.
I just, where's, is the red, is that the commercial?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is that in the mud or not?
All of it's in the mud.
All of it? So, whenever you start developing that, that'll be another 20, 25 years before it comes back into us?
Well, that'd be up to the city and what bonds are put on the land for reimbursement that the mud district allows. Strictly up to the city.
We have a limited annexation provision in the agreement.
Okay.
All right. And then, the last question is, is there any land that's, I know you donate it to the, your people donate it to the city for the, for the airport, but is there any land in here donated to, for schools or like fire departments or anything like that? Because that many houses, you're going to need them.
Yeah, we've already, none has been identified, because no one had an idea where to put it. We did talk to the school district, and when he said, "When you get rooftops out there, call me." It may not be the best sites.
I'm working for us right now.
Yeah. But...
School.
There's, yeah, there was a site...
Top, okay.
Down there in the corner, near the intersection of 567 and 377, we allocated for that sort of thing. I think that's like five acres. I think that's like five acres there. The scale is pretty, pretty large, so it's shrunk down. There's some five acres allocated for that. And that might move, which is important to the council to understand. This document effectively is our zoning. It's called land use, but it was inside the city we called. We have a provision within the development agreement that calls for density transfer. We can shift things around a little bit as the market tells us what's needed and where it's needed. But we can't go over a maximum number of living units or capacity as defined in the development agreement. And John will speak to that here in a minute on the comprehensive studies. So we might move a commercial over a little bit, but we can't go over our total amount of commercial property that we've been approved in the development agreement. We cannot go over the maximum number of living units or houses. Like, I think our development agreement calls for a little under 5,000 houses out there. We got 2,000 acres, so that's less than 1.5, 2.3, I think it is, living units per acre. So we're a very low-density development in the macro sense. We might have some concentration of development, or even apartments, multifamily and that sort of thing. We hope to have some commercial, even heavy commercial. But overall, we'll be a low-density unit. It'll just sounds big when you're talking about 2,000 acres. And it is a big deal. Clearly, this is the biggest project ever brought to Granberry. We see Granberry as a growth market, and it'll continue to do so over the next 10 to 20 years.
That land that you're talking about, Mr. Hackett, for the schools and the fire department, that's going to be given to the city or given to the school?
That's the plan, yes. Once they agree to it, and we have the water and sewer to supply it. We couldn't, it's like the right-of-way. We've allocated for the right-of-way, but we haven't dedicated it yet until Tax Dot says they want it. But we want to have a master plan in our development strategy to do something that conforms to what they want. The school district might say, "We'd rather have it on 51." The school district might say, "We want it on 377." I don't know. But we've allocated, and that's in our development agreement, as is parks and HOA centers. They might move a little bit, but we have, I think, three HOA centers in the development agreement and the land use plan. One important thing that has caused some of the confusion about using interim holding. If you'll notice, this kind of funky, I keep doing that. Let's try again. I'm hitting your spotlight and it's changing the pages, so maybe my thumb's too big.
Point it at this machine.
Point at which one? Okay. Well, you had a hole, right?
Yeah.
Okay, see that white outline right there? That was really causing us a lot of concern back when we did the original deal with the airport. That is the overhead easement that we had to move. Brass's power line was causing a lot of trouble for us, and it was bringing that overhead easement right down some of the most pretty property that we had, and it was even allocated for a linear park. Well, with the movement of the substation, the friendship substation, west of the runway, which is very expensive, that goes away. And now we can redevelop that area the way we originally wanted to. So again, maybe the delay has really helped things in the long sense. You know, it's kind of like we always say at church, if we follow God's will, it'll turn out okay. We follow man's will, it gets screwed up. Well, by waiting, we've got a better plan. And now we can redevelop that area the way we originally intended to, which was a linear park and a roadway going up that grade. And by the way, that's the headwaters of Lambert Creek, Lambert Park. That's where it starts. So water quality and runoff is very important to us. So we're going to have to detain and slow that water and clean it up as it runs down to the city park. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Mr. Hackett, you guys have done a great job and donated a lot of property, and I guess, I guess my question is this. So there seems to be a sense of urgency. There was a rush meeting, let's get this on the agenda.
Yes.
And let's get this before us today. And yet, we have a process that we go through to have the different departments look at it and properly vet it so that we get good information from them.
Do you have a question?
If you'll let me get there, I'll be happy to get to it, okay?
Get there.
So we have, since, for the last five months, basically nothing's happened. And yet, there's a sense of urgency now. And normally, we get feedback from the engineer. He can't be here as a councilperson. I can tell you that I rely on their opinions a lot more than anybody else here to make sure we're doing the right thing and to make sure the steps are followed by everybody. And so my reluctance to vote on this tonight is just due to that fact. We have not gone through that process to allow him to give us his feedback to make sure what we're seeing today is actually what the entire project's going to look like.
There's no changes to the comprehensive land use plan tonight to be considered. I think your argument would be valid if that were the case. I thought it might be a good way. There has been some frustration on our level, I assure you. We're nine years into this process. We're over 320,000 into the cost, our side. It was getting a little arduous for us, too. Now, we're not asking for any changes, other than the staff had requested us to bring the comprehensive study to the council, not to the PMZ, not to staff, because the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis Study, was being amended different than what the comprehensive plan did. And that's really why the studies are here tonight. Your staff, your engineers have reviewed all of those studies, and they have approved them. He wanted it to be brought forward to the council so they would ratify that amendment. Is that my understanding, Chris?
Yes.
That's why we're here.
So I'll ask Chris, Mr. Coffin, as far as your staff is concerned, has everything been done that we need, that we need to do to make sure that we're protecting the city on this?
The, in your packet, you've got the letter from the engineer that identifies, was back in September, that they have no more comments on the studies. And their engineer is going to make a presentation to you in a minute on the studies. And then the agreement says that we may request this presentation. And so we requested it way back in November. So here we are tonight. Our engineer can't be here, they're here. So it may be a two-phase approach to being able to approve something. But staff, obviously, my staff has seen and relied on the engineer for everything that we've got approved. We're not the engineers, we're not the ones reviewing it. We're relying on our engineer to have said what we're approving is what was submitted. And then what's being submitted tonight is what he's declaring to be the same thing. So that's kind of where we're at. We really wish our engineer could have been here.
Who put it on here? You?
Yes, I was requested to put it on.
By a councilperson?
Uh-huh.
Gary, why you went on there in two days?
Hey, council, council, please speak into your mics there so we can get it all in quarters, okay?
No, we, I was approached by Mr. Hackett to meet with Chris over this, and that's what I did. And Chris and Ken and I had a meeting, and that's how it ended up on the agenda.
May I add a comment to that?
Mr. Hackett.
The reason we wanted to get it on the agenda is every time I go to the city, every time I go out in the square, "When are you going to start Knox Ranch? When are you going to start Knox Ranch?" That's been going for five years. So, yes, some of it's for our own delay, but there's been delay after delay and scrutinizing and scrutinizing and scrutinizing. So we thought it was time to get her done, and that's why we're here.
So if this, Mayor, may I speak, please?
Councilman Allen.
Thank you. If this is approved tonight, then when will y'all start breaking ground?
Well, we'll start grubbing and grooming Phase One very soon.
The preliminary, the preliminary plat expires in April. They've got to do something quick.
Right. Are we have to come back and recertify it?
So my question, Chris, and Mr. Mobley had asked it, I guess, in the same, the same way, is so is our staff ready to give the findings on this? I mean, are they prepared to give the findings on this?
No.
Already have.
Well, I know they have.
The engineer has already done his review and has submitted a letter...
Signed off.
And said, "Go," you know? And so that's all staff was relying on.
Okay.
It's not up to us to review the engineering.
So there's no other staff findings that need to be?
To our knowledge.
Okay.
You know? The thing is, is without our engineer here, it makes it pretty awkward to provide you all the information you need to make a good decision.
I understand that.
And so, like I said, we've got his engineer coming from Austin. I think y'all should hear his presentation and go from there, you know? If you feel like you need to meet with Marty at the next meeting, we can do that as well.
Council, no more discussion here. Let's hear from the engineer.
Yes, that's the next part of our presentation, the comprehensive studies. That's the highlighter at the top. Good evening. Hi, my name is John DuSet. I'm with DuSet and Associates, as you heard. So, I'll advance that. The development agreement, we worked on for several years, and it was approved in March of 2013. The conceptual land plan that was attached to that was revised and approved in January of 2015. And it's important to note that the comprehensive studies that we did were based on the revised land plan. So what we're representing tonight are studies that are in fact jive, they jive with the current land plan, the current approved land plan. Inside the development agreement, there is a requirement for these comprehensive studies, and those studies consist of a comprehensive water study, wastewater study, a drainage study, and a traffic impact analysis. And as you can imagine, a project of this size will generate a lot of water, a lot of sewer runoff and trapping impact. And so the city, and rightly so, is concerned, well, how will that impact our infrastructure? And how does that get paid for? So what the studies were designed to do was to look at each one of these four items and look at it on a timeline to see at what point does the city system become impacted to the point where some improvement needs to be made. And that's what we've done in all four cases. We've been through many rounds of submittals, comments from your engineer and staff, revisions, and we've done a lot of that over the last two, two-and-a-half years. So we're at the point now where we believe the staff, it is our opinion, of course, that staff has blessed this as well as your engineer. And I know you want to hear that from your folks, but that's just our understanding. So first of these studies, the water study, and you probably can't see those fine print items there, but I'll try to go fairly quickly and kind of keep at the higher level instead of getting down into the minutia. But all of these are based on the demand or the use. And so what's commonly used in these studies is what's referred to as an LUE. That first line up there says, "Living Unit Equivalent." That's a misprint. It's Living, Living Unit Equivalent. And what it equates to is what a normal, single-family house will use or generate in the case of wastewater in a single day. Excuse me. So on the water side, an LUE represents 400 gallons per day. On the wastewater side, you'll see it in a minute, but it's 275 gallons per day. So essentially, what we do is we take the total demand and look at it over the timeline and see when things are needed to be improved. And so essentially, on the water side, we base these on the conceptual plan. We take the conceptual plan and estimate the number of homes and/or businesses and the uses that have been identified to come up with the total water demand. When we revised the plan from the first conceptual to the second, the LUEs increased because we added some more commercial lots. So it went from about 5,400 LUEs to about 5,900. On the, the way the water worked out was we need to install a fire booster prior to Phase One. If you know the area, pardon me, there's a ground storage tank up on the hill. Water is pumped from down below up to that, and that provides enough pressure for most of the areas. But in some areas on the property, it's too high, so you don't get enough pressure. So we'd have to install a pressure booster system for Phase One and then, or a hydro pneumatic tank with Phase One. But with Phase Two, we're going to also have to provide a hydro pneumatic tank. So that essentially is what the water system calls for now. As this thing develops further, there's more things we have to do, increase pipes, add pipes. And at some point along the way, we're going to have to add an elevated storage tank as this thing fully develops out. So again, those are timed with the development of the properties. No one really knows when that'll happen exactly. So this is designed to give your staff an idea of what the trigger point is for Mr. Hackett and his team to start spending money, putting these improvements so that we can service the development. On the wastewater side, and that's the layout essentially of the water system, again, that's probably more minutia than you want to see. On the wastewater side, we did the same thing using, as I said, an LUE of 275 gallons per day. And that increased again based on the land plan. And using that and identify that comparing to what the city system is, we ended up with three possible options of how to sewer the property. One is a gravity flow and a force main combination. One is a force main to the existing wastewater treatment plant. And then the third option was a force main all the way to the future wastewater treatment plant, which is further, further east. So when and how that's decided is when we get to that point. And I know the city's been doing some improvements as well, so we'll just simply look at that point in time, what makes the most sense for the city as well as for developer. And then I'll show you this. This is the wastewater option one. Those different lines represent, the green is gravity line, the purple is a force main, and that's taking it over to the existing plant to the east of the river. Option two, pardon me, is more force main and less gravity line. And then option three takes it all the way to the other treatment plant. Drainage, as you guys know, when you start putting pavement down, building homes, it increases the speed at which water runs off the property. So as part of the city rules, and they follow the North Central Texas Council of Government's Development Design Life Guidelines, we've looked at the drainage, and you have to go downstream off-site until your property is 10% or less of the contributing area to that point in the stream. So we've done that. We've provided all of that information to your staff and to the engineer. And the bottom line of all that is there will have to be detention ponds on-site. So we'll be building detention ponds as the need is, occurs. In the low-density area to the west and within the property, as Ken pointed out, we wanted to do some low-impact design methodologies. So that requires, you know, less impervious cover, narrower streets, some traffic calming things, things like rain gardens, areas where we can, all right, thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, appreciate that. Maybe this will help. So there's a few techniques that we use in central Texas that would work well in this environment to help with runoff of storm drainage as well as water quality in the detention. So again, your staff, we went through several iterations of this. We actually wanted narrower streets. They wanted a little bit wider for, I think, for safety reasons, fire, EMS. So that's, that's the drainage part of the comprehensive studies. Now, those three studies were submitted. Again, we've been through several iterations, comments back and forth with the city, and they, they again have been blessed, but they cover the entire development. The last study that we had to do, the traffic impact analysis, is one where, you know, a traffic engineer will... a traffic engineer will make some projections on the traffic based on the land use and what the land plan looks like, identify intersections, what improvements need to be made. It's very difficult to predict five, 10 years down the road. So we asked that instead of trying to do a traffic analysis for the entire development, let's do it for phase, phase one. And, uh, staff concurred, uh, and so we've submitted the traffic impact analysis. It's been blessed, uh, with several caveats, I think, that are important for you guys to understand. So the traffic impact analysis was for phase one only. And if you can, on this slide, you can see where phase one is going to be on the western side of the property. Those little boxes around there show each intersection and how they operate. So the bottom line here is it was, uh, based on traffic to 2022 and the conditions, uh, the develop, in other words, the developed conditions for phase one. And, uh, here's some of the results of that. It's level of service for, uh, each intersection. Level of service is an indication of how well it'll operate. A, the best, F, it's, it's a traffic nightmare. So, uh, you know, if, if you guys want to get into more detail, just holler and stop me, but essentially it shows that the, the, each intersection will operate without any problems, uh, for phase one. And then lastly here, we've got the traffic impact analysis for phase one. These are the important points I wanted to make clear to you guys. All lots are assumed to be residential for this first T I A on that phase one. No final plat may be submitted for commercial uses without an updated T I A. In other words, we'll have to go back and study that area again for the impact that the commercial traffic would have on the surrounding areas and the intersections. And it, yeah, that's based on use. Uh, additional phases, other than phase one, will require a T I A addendum. And that again, has to be approved by your staff and your engineer. And then the, the study was limited to the area west of Meadowwood, which is that road that bisects the western part and the eastern part that Ken was talking about. So there's a lot more work to be done as this thing develops out with respect to the T I As. And then the, uh, the eastern portion of Knox Ranch will require a T I A as well. And it also, the development agreement requires that any changes, uh, in the land use or the density in areas that would impact any of this infrastructure to a degree that is concerning to the staff, we have to come back and amend those comprehensive studies. So it's really kind of a living document, these comprehensive studies. Uh, you know, it's our best guess right now at how this thing will develop on a timeline. And then this, things are going on around us. You know, people are putting in water lines, improving lift stations. So as we get to those points in time, we'll take another look at it before we go forward. All of these, all the development will require, uh, plats being submitted, infrastructure plans being submitted, and that the city, uh, staff will get another look at what we're planning and, you know, ground-truth it to this study. So this isn't the last time they're going to get to see these things, but this is our best guess now. So our, our ask tonight is, uh, we have been doing this a very long time. We feel like we've done everything that your staff has asked for and your, and your consultants, and that we want to get on with it, with the first phase of development. So we respectively request that, uh, you guys approve this tonight so we can move forward. And I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, counsel. We having questions for?
I've got one.
Councilman Allen.
This, this goes back, uh, the mayor and I was on council back whenever this was first, first brought to us in 2013. And you was talking about wastewater plants. You know, y'all may build one out there on the place, or you may send it to the one where it got. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the, the plan was that it was always going to go to the city system.
Okay, but, but wouldn't there a cost involved with that if y'all?
Okay.
Built so many houses, y'all would pay for it?
Yes, uh, in all the infrastructure. The way the agreement is written is that at the time the development occurs, we look at the city's state of infrastructure. If there's capacity there for us, we tie in. If, if, if not, then we can, on the developer's option can go build it at their expense. Okay, yeah.
There was no intent to ever put a wastewater plant on site. The other plant, the third option showed the possibility of, of pushing affluent all the way to a new plant of the city. That was like option three. The reason that was given consideration was the, the lift station capacity at 144 at the time was very limited. Now, I understand that's been massively improved and increased, so now there's probably capacity to put wastewater to that, uh, lift station and then it could be pumped across, uh, the bridge and onto your current plant. But at some point in time, you guys are going to have to build a, a new wastewater plant.
Well, I think it, we're about maxed out there anyway. That's why we're looking at a new one now. And, uh, I just want to make sure I understood what the deal was.
There would be impact fees, uh, as I understand the developer, to the builder when they actually tie on. That's part of the standard agreement.
We all pay impact fees when we build houses. So that's no different.
Exactly.
Councilman Couch?
Yeah, um, I want to come back to the, to the item that, that we're asking to approve tonight. And it says, accepting and approving the comprehensive study to support the Knox Ranch development as, as outlined in the comprehensive development agreement. And then I go to the letter from the city engineer to, to, to Mr. Sopcheck, and it says, uh, the Knox Ranch comprehensive study includes, uh, traffic, water, drainage, wastewater. It says, our previous comments regarding the submittals have been addressed. We have no further comments and accept the Knox Ranch comprehensive study as presented. And that study has not changed?
No, it has not changed.
Okay, so is this kind of more of a formality, Chris?
I, I think that it was a formality. Our agreement has been met, other than the may make a presentation. So in fact, uh, their attorney wrote me a letter saying, we've met the requirements of the contract, but because you've asked, we will make a presentation. And that's where we're at. And we're, we're needing to, to accept the, the presentation. And if you need the engineer here to do that, well, he's got a video. He can watch it between now and then and come talk to you next meeting.
Here, here's my problem, though.
How's that?
You know, and I, 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 I'm sure what Mr. Hackett and engineer is saying is correct. I remember back in, uh, March of 2013, we went to Rush to Judgment in a back room because it had to be voted on. You remember that, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Had to be voted on that meeting, or they're going to lose the mud. Every time, I mean, it's been three years since I've heard anything about this. And I know y'all have been working on it for three years, so I'm not saying you haven't. But I'd feel more comfortable if our engineer was here and said, that's the plans I approved. That's going to be it. I, I would feel more comfortable that way. However, the council feels, that's fine. I don't, don't have no hard feelings. That's just my, that's just my.
Look, we've been at this for nine years.
Yes, sir.
If it's more comfortable for the council to have the, the engineer standing before you and say, it's been met, then we're okay with tableing it tonight. We're not trying here to push it for those reasons. We want to get started. And according to John and, and our, uh, our interpretation of the agreement, we met the standards as required. The presentation was a courtesy. So if that's, makes the council more comfortable, two more weeks is not going to change our world. We got lots to do out there and lots to plan. So please, counsel, trust me in saying, either way is okay. We'd like to get it done tonight.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Appreciate that comment. I think that makes my decision a whole lot easier. And I'm not trying to be difficult up here. I'm just trying to use all the resources that we're paying for to, to basically give us all the confidence we can get in, in addressing any of these issues. So it's, it's certainly not discriminatory or, we're not being biased against anybody. We just want to make sure that everybody signs off on this. It, it should, because you know as well as I do, when you're in public office, or maybe you're going to find out, when you're, when you're in public office, people will remember the decisions that, that you make that they don't agree with. And they will remind you constantly. So that's what we're trying, we're trying to take it slow, because as, as, uh, Mr. Allen said, five, 10 years ago, or nine years ago, whatever the number is, two more weeks hopefully won't hurt. And if it does, I'm sorry, but yeah, I would feel a whole lot more comfortable.
Won't hurt. Would like to correct your one statement. We paid for our engineers and we paid for your engineers.
Well, I understand that, but we rely on our engineers.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Yeah, I'd go like, I'd like to go ahead and table this till our next meeting, when our city engineer can be here.
Let's postpone. Table it, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to table the, uh, this item and tell our engineer to be here, hopefully the next council meeting.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Mobley.
That'll be the first meeting in March.
Yes.
Okay.
Six.
Yeah. Martin, no. Martin, he can be here.
Yeah.
So, so we got a, a motion and a second to table this for the next meeting, the first meeting in March. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will be postponed for the first meeting.
Thank you, counsel.
And I will say we'll continue. If it doesn't work out there, we'll continue to have one, a discussion every meeting until we get you going.
Maybe then we can bring our lawyers.
There you go.
No lawyers.
Thank you. And thanks for the water, by the way.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Our next item is to receive and discuss a quarterly report of Visit Granberry Corporation covering the October 1st, December 31st, 2017, and discuss the current destination and marketing impact results. And this is going to be given by our own Teresa here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel, city manager. I've got, well, first I want to thank you for letting me come before you this evening. I'm always happy to share what Visit Granberry is working on. I'm happy to share our successes. And equally, I'm here to share our challenges when we have those as well. I'm blessed to have a supportive board of directors, many of which are in the room tonight. Could you raise your hand? They're an amazing group. They're supportive. They're passionate about Granberry. They're passionate about the work we do to market Granberry. I also have a new staff team member, Ashley Meyer. She could wave. She's been with us for a couple of months. We're happy to have her. She's my marketing rock star, and I just love having her as part of the team. Looking about the audience, I feel blessed and fortunate to have others who I call my industry stakeholders. They're interested enough to come out in the rain and uncertain weather to listen to what we're talking about. They, um, they're important to what we do, and I'm glad to have them here as well. We know Visit Granberry is funded by a visitor tax. It's not a resident tax. It's a visitor tax. It's a visitor tax on lodging, guest rooms within the city of Granberry. We respect you, the city council, that entrust those visitor taxes with us and the work, and our efforts we do in marketing Granberry. We thank you for your support and we do take our role very seriously. We attempt to be the best stewards of those funds that we can possibly be. We just completed our annual financial audit, receiving excellent marks in all areas. So we're very aware and conscious of the importance of that. I have a few highlights I want to share with you, many of which were included in your council packet. I have a little PowerPoint that, that details out some of the highlights. See if I can get this working. Now, this isn't what I needed, Rick. It's my other PowerPoint instead of this report. I'm sorry. I just gave it to him before the meeting. I should have get, uh, been more aware and provided it to him earlier.
Is this supposed to be different than what's in our packet?
Yes. It's the, it's the same information, some different highlights.
I got you.
That I thought you might be interested in, because I didn't want to just go page by page of that report, because I know you can read and you've read it. And so you don't, I just thought it'd be more interesting if I did it in a little bit more of a condensed way. So I wanted to talk with you a little bit about our quarterly report. Again, our core focus stays the same. Our role, we believe very strongly in, is to drive new and or current visitor demand. We focus on enhancing the visitor experience, and we know it's important that we communicate DMO relevancy and viability. We continue to operate under our four basic strategic goals. Well, I guess I should go back on that. Uh, based on our function areas of destination, marketing and sales, destination development, our advocacy and community relations role, and of course, the DMO resources and administration. So we have full transparency in the work that we do. We're very proud to say that we launched our new destination website. The, the website for any DMO is the number one information portal, any DMO, C V B, any destination marketing initiative that's happening. It's like the engine. You can think you're going to drive the bus somewhere and you've got tires and you've got the body, but if you don't have the engine in there, you're not going anywhere and you're just stagnant. So we did launch the new website. It, launched on January the 31st. We pay it great attention to the analytics on the site. So what we wanted to find out, number one, we needed to make sure the new website is mobile responsive. So it's viewable on every sort of platform or device that is out there. Also, we're learning that the people who are looking at the new website are trending about the same way as the old one, because about half of them look at it on a mobile device. Another, and about 42% look at it on desktop, and the tablet is much, much smaller at 11%. Sometimes I'm surprised by this because of the, of the many, many times you see people with tablets, you'd think it'd be viewed on tablets more often, but it isn't. And so what we're happy about is the new website. If you do look at it on, at, look at it on your phone, it's very easy to navigate and determine what you need to look at and where it is. We also are looking at our age demographics. We wanted to compare, and it's just as like a one-week post-launch, but still important information for us. We wanted to compare it to the previous site. So the number one age group or demographic on the site is 55 to 64. Running neck and neck behind that is the 45 to 54 and the 35 to 44. So those are our age demographics. We have three audiences that we target. We kind of consider these psychographics. We have the affluent nesters. Those are our upscale couples whose children have left the home. They've got money to spend and plenty of time for an active lifestyle to explore arts and interests. We want these people in Granberry. Successful midlifers. Singles and couples with steady, successful jobs are career-minded. Balance their high-demand professional lives with laid-back activities. We have those laid-back activities. We want these people in Granberry. And accumulating families. Families with busy, accumulating wealth, education and family experiences. Families are top priorities, so they look for activities to make lasting memories. We want these people in Granberry as well. We know the importance of a well-rounded marketing campaign, and any sort of marketing initiative has to also include social media. We've increased the video posts. We learned that 63% the people will look at a, a social media post if it's video. 63% increase will look at it. On your website, 110%, they will stay 110% longer if there's video on your website. So we've got video for our website planned as well. So we did increase from this same time last year, a 900% increase in our video posts and a 460% increase in all of our social posts. With the Facebook algorithms, for a while, we were at the top end of that. We were doing 21 posts a week, three a day. And then we learned, looking at the analytics and other industry trends, we were learning that that was too much. So we've, seven, we feel is way too little, so we're at 14 posts a week. So we're doing two posts a day. At least one Facebook Live a week. And then on Fridays, there's a top trends for weekend fun. It's video. And we put that, that out every Friday. Another, uh, tool we have in our arsenal is user content. So we have a portal. It's called CrowdRiff, where people are folks, are visitors who, and locals, who do a hashtag, hashtag Visit Granberry. And when they tag it, that photograph or that image or that video comes into this portal for us, for our, for us to use. So a year ago, we had 800 images or videos in our CrowdRiff, uh, port, uh, platform. Now, this past January, we had 1,152, so we increased it by 44%. If you were to go to visitgranberry.com and you look at the homepage, If you were to go to visitgranberry.com and you look at the homepage, and you go down to the bottom, you see all these photographs here? That's what that is. That's all user-generated content. So then if you go later in the day, it's going to be some different photographs. You come back in a couple of days, it's going to be different photographs as well, because it continues to refresh as we're able to approve photographs that come in with the hashtag #VisiGranberry. Thankfully, we get a chance to approve those, because there are some that we don't think is appropriate, they're out of focus, it's someone's big toe, it's all kinds of things that we don't think visitors need to necessarily enjoy on our website. So we're able to approve that. We're also able to use that platform and get approval from the influencers, and we can put those same posts out on Facebook. And they're like, it's user-generated content. So we're able to use that in a variety of ways. Even some cases, we're able to get approval from photographers to use some of their images in some of our digital ads, and even print ads, because they like to have their photography used in a variety of different ways. I'm happy to report, we have total earned media year-to-date. This is October 1st through the end of January, of over a half a million dollars. Hopefully, you all were able to see the WFAs Good Morning Texas. We did it about two weeks ago. It was out at Let's Eat. We had a good fifteen to twenty minutes of coverage for Granberry culinary opportunities in Granberry, fun things happening in Granberry. So please go to our Facebook page and look at the video. We didn't have the opportunity to buy the clip, but we can say that the value of that clip was, the minimum value of that clip was about six thousand dollars. We also, um, other earned media that we, some we put on Facebook, the Houston Chronicle posted Granberry candlelight tour listed as one of the top Christmas events in Texas. So we are working on this campaign all the time. It's a great addition to the other marketing that we do for Visi Granberry, and it's, it positions us in a beautiful way. For the first fiscal quarter, we had Harvest Moon Festival of the Arts, and so we, this year, kept close tabs on the investment that Visi Granberry did with marketing and in-kind services, and also the media value. So our in-kind services, including some advertising for Harvest Moon Festival, was over fifteen thousand dollars. The earned media value of that, getting it placed, like articles, listings and calendars and things like that, was eighty-four hundred. So our total Visi Granberry investment on Harvest Moon Festival of the Arts was twenty-four thousand sixty-one dollars and some odd cents. We made a real focus on Harvest Moon, a couple of reasons. One, it was at the, it was like the first major amazing event after the sidewalk renovation project. So we wanted to really push that Granberry is open, Granberry has great events and all of that. Secondly, we consider two events to be kind of iconic, and I'm not talking about Fourth of July. That's just, just, that's iconic, but we don't do marketing services for it. We've worked with the Wine Walk, the Granberry Wine Walk, and I have some data on that that I'll share with you next time. Are already working with the Wine Walk people on the marketing for the 2018 event. The media, Mary Lester, who's our PR expert and social media manager, is already working to get placement on television stations in the Metroplex about the celebrity chefs and so forth. And then we consider the Harvest Moon one of those as well. So what we did were impact studies and satisfaction studies. So for the Harvest Moon Festival, we did an impact study, and we did this with intercepts. And in intercepts, what you do is you actually intercept the visitor. So we had some college students, some high school students, some staff, and we went around with our clipboards, and we intercepted folks who were visiting and enjoying the Harvest Moon Festival. And we asked some basic questions, because this was about economic impact. Forty-one point four percent of them overnighted in Granberry. Their average stay was one point six two nights. They little over one meal, it says, and their average expenditure on the meal was twenty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Fifty-four percent of them did purchase from artists. Local spending was twenty-two eighty-nine, means they didn't spend anything, buy anything really expensive. But this was important to me. Sixty-three point four percent said they visited local shops. I've worked in some other communities where they complain about events. They say, "Events take away from my shop. I'm paying rent all year long. I don't like events. I don't like events taking away from my shop." I've never heard that here, the grumblings, but I was interested to ask this question. And I'm very happy to see sixty-three point four percent visited the local shops as well while we, while they were here. Average spent per person, eighty-nine thirty-five, so that gives a direct economic impact based on our estimated attendance of anywhere from three hundred sixteen to three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, impact of Harvest Moon. And I think that's excellent. It's a wonderful event. Cynthia James does a fabulous job putting, coordinating it and putting it on. She has her own study where she actually talked with the vendors and tried to get a range of their sales, top being, I think, sixteen thousand, going on down to being like a hundred dollars. So there was a wide range in there. She always has a really good idea of how many nights they spent in the community, how much they spent on maybe food and beverage or whatever. So when we compare and put them all together, the economic impact of the Harvest Moon Festival is an, tells me it's an important one, and it's one we want to continue with. We also did, I felt like, some significant marketing related to the holidays. We did, this was all done by Visi Granberry. We did rack cards. We ended up having to do two printings because we ran out. We did display ads, digital ads broadcast. We did six weekend event blasts. These go out at the end of, middle to the end of every week to our visitor database. We did seventeen media videos and a hundred and forty-one social media posts. If we calculate the PR value, these are listings in calendars, articles and so forth, it totaled thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. So you add the thirteen five eighty-three to the value of everything else we did, and then I think you can say that there was an impact that we made for the holidays and during the holiday season, because it's important to our retailers and it's important to Granberry. Was working with the fabulous Ava, your finance director. We've been talking for a while about how to, um, track and try to figure out the downtown square, historic square sales tax impact. So this is a, I'm sure she shared it with you. This is something that we found quite interesting, because we were anticipating a decrease in the sales tax, and this is just of the square parameter. This isn't all of Granberry. This is the downtown square. Uh, the impact of the downtown renovation project, and instead of it being a decrease, we saw an increase of three percent. So you can see where we were in 2015. Twenty sixteen is the first full year of Visi Granberry, it was up twenty percent. And then even considering the challenges of the downtown square project, it was up three percent. Visi Granberry does not take full responsibility for this, but we can say, we had radio and broadcasts practically every single day. We had a special line item in our budget, which related to downtown square marketing, separate and apart to the other marketing that we do for the destination. We did social media, social media, social media, and we always took the high road. We never showed a construction vehicle. We never showed a hole in the street. We never talked about construction. We didn't talk about dust. We didn't talk about anything. We just said, "Granberry is a great place to visit. Come see what's happening. Come experience the excitement." And we just kept honing it on and on and on. Shops are open. Granberry is a great place to visit. I think, too, our retail shops and our restaurants around the square did a heck of a job marketing themselves. I know not all of them were up. Many of them were down, but they did a great job marketing their businesses. The Opera House had fabulous shows last year. Fabulous shows. It's our first full year of the New Granberry Live, and the impact they could possibly have on this. So I find this very positive, that that's where we are with the sales tax figures. So upcoming things we have, and then one that's really important that we're just starting, and our first one is next month, we're going to develop some destination marketing forums. And we'll, Visi Granberry will host them, but it's more about sharing and collaborating on ideas. We want our hoteliers there, our small properties. We want our restaurants. We want our retail. We want HGMA. We want Gab. We want everybody to come together, and let's talk about what marketing that Visi Granberry's doing. Let's talk about what marketing they're doing. What are our successes? What are our challenges? Are there some natural collaborations or co-op things that could come out as a result of that? So we're very excited about this process. Uh, we'll be able to do some training at our first one about, it's called the extranet. It's how our businesses can get into the website and make changes on their own directory listing, and change their own photos, and change their copy. We'll be able, by that time, to teach them how to go in and put in a lodging package. You know, talk with Opera Guild or what, or Opera House or whatever, and then come up with a lodging package, and they can put those things in there. And there will be other ways they can help sell themselves and sell their own property. Our retail businesses can put up a coupon, if they have something specific that they want to promote or sell. And these are all value-added to our businesses as part of this new website program that we have. We've got some video, I'm going to show you some videos next. One's on girlfriend's getaways, and then we even did a Facebook Live with the mayor who's singing to the visitors. He did a great job.
Can we play that?
I'll go play that one.
Next slide, please.
But if you want to go to the Facebook, you can see it.
Next slide.
So that's what I have. I'm going to, how do I get to the videos? There's three. Yeah, pick one and play. Just any of them. Doesn't matter. I just thought you'd like to see them, because... Obviously, that's revolver. We have two more. We have a girlfriend's getaway, and then we have the Christmas one. And when we did the Facebook, these are videos for Facebook. We also ran them as Facebook ads, and we boosted them as well. We got really amazing engagement on each and every one of them. So we've got plans to develop a series of videos that we'll use not only on social media, but we'll have them embedded in our website as well. Okay? And we have one more. The one you're getting ready to see is the girlfriend's getaway. It had the highest engagement and the highest shares. So those are our videos so far. We have several planned. Any questions for me?
I have two, Ms. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
Teresa, thank you.
Go up to the mic, Councilman Allen.
I'm sorry. Say you got on to us for not talking to the mic.
Trying to help him.
I know. Appreciate it. I forget. Uh, two, two questions. One of them is, seeing the video there, there's a new eating place called Let's Eat. Used to be over at Bluffdale. And my wife and I were out there two, three weeks ago eating, and, uh, you know, we kind of sat with everybody, and, uh, there were some people there from Fort Worth and sang and all, I think he said. Anyway, uh, I asked them how they heard about it, and they said it was a little deal on TV. They came out and videoed him. That would be a good one also, because they bring a lot of people into town, and it's a good place to eat.
Yeah, we actually coordinated that. It was on Good Morning Texas.
Oh, you did?
Yes. It was part of our efforts that we got the page from Good Morning Texas to come to Let's Eat. We had, you know, a half a dozen or so folks sitting there.
But he was sickle, and it paid off. It really did.
He did a great job, too. Plus, we got to eat the leftovers, and that was all good as well. But, uh, no, he does a great job, and he's, he's so outgoing and charismatic.
Yes.
Yeah.
He's a good guy. Also, on the Harvest Moon, you showed they spent an average of eighty-nine dollars apiece. Is that correct?
That's right.
That didn't include the motel room, did it?
I have some other analytics on that. If you take the entire, if you take the whole study, and there's a, there's a magic number that you have to have, and we got it. You take the whole study, and you take, and then you divide it, it comes out to that. That would have been those, even those who did not overnight and those who did overnight, the average would have been that.
Because looking at those numbers, I just looked at them quickly, it was like one point six days or something they stayed. So that means they spent the night. And I'm just curious to...
So we averaged those who spent the night and those who did not spend the night. We averaged them together to come up with that eighty-nine dollar.
Okay.
So I do have a separate number for those who overnighted and those who did not overnight. I didn't know how in-depth that you would want to be looking at tonight.
What percent of people, just, I know you've got all these numbers here and stuff, but if you were looking at it or thinking about it, say like a weekend, say like last weekend, do you know how many people actually stay in hotels and which ones don't? Or not which ones, but how many?
No, I don't. No.
Is there any way to track it?
So if you're thinking about what percentage of people who come on a, on a given timeframe, and how many overnighted and how many were day trips, we would, we could embark on a visitor profile study, which would take several months to do, but it's all, it's very good information to have. That would tell us some of that. We've never done a visitor profile study, and I couldn't find one from the previous entity before there were some studies, but not one based on that. But I can't tell you that, no. I can tell you on Wine Walk that seventy-eight percent of the people overnight, those who come for Wine Walk.
I, I was just curious to, you know, which hotels is getting business, which ones not? You know, what, what's going on on that market? Uh, I know it's a hot tax for you and for us.
Absolutely, yes.
But, you know, I just, I think in some way that, if we could, to know, you know, how many stay in at the Hilton, how many stay in at Plantation Inn, how many stay in at the Holiday Inn, or, you know, I just, I thought they did a report. I thought somebody said they did a...
That's privileged information by this state, I think.
Not the names. I mean, the names, yeah, but I mean, if you said you stay, we had eight people said they were from out of town, and they came to visit Granberry.
I don't have it broken down that far. I do know there are properties who need help, who need more people staying overnight with them, and we're beginning to have more conversations with them, and I'm hoping when we have our marketing forums, we can really get into that and figure out some, some ways, because we might need to attract different market segments to help them out. Because there could be folks who come, and let's say, they stay at the Inn on Lake Granberry. They might not be the same people who stay at the Comfort Suites, because they might be here for a special birthday, a special anniversary celebration, they save up all year to have this one, you know, or their, their small wedding, or whatever the case may be. There are properties here who satisfy experience desires differently than others do. You know, we have some beautiful small properties here. We've got, you know, Inn on Lake Granberry, we've got Iron Horse, we've got Heritage Cabins, we've got some Traverse Street cottages. We've got some beautiful properties here, and they all have a special and unique experience. And they're attracted to Granberry for, number one, the visitor experience, and two, they're attracted for those unique experiences. So some folks will come, and they'll have those, like, unique B&amp;B experiences, maybe one for a celebration of some sort. Another time, they might come for an event, and they might not stay that way. They might choose to stay in a, in a, in a hotel, more of a, a flag or a limited service hotel.
Who is the meeting going to be at on March? Where's the meeting gonna be at on March?
I don't know. I'm hoping to have it at the Conference Center. And that room upstairs, I like that room.
It's for rent.
I know it is.
All right.
I'll call you, and you can arrange that room for me.
I'm plugging that rent.
I know it's for rent.
Council, any more questions for Teresa?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Teresa, I think you're doing a great job. I respect your organization. I've said it in the past, I'm gonna do nothing but support it.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'm a numbers guy. I'm a finance guy. And your reports, I am so confused by all these numbers. So, if you'll just bear with me.
I will.
Okay. So, you've had nine-hundred percent increase in the number of videos.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean? How many did we do last year, and how many did we do this year?
We did zero last year. That's why your percentage of increase is so great.
Okay, well, that explains what...
There's that one.
And then, social posts were four-hundred-and-sixty percent up?
Yes, because we were not good at it last year. We weren't doing nearly, nearly enough the same time. And we learned a lot more. We had a difference person assigned to that, a staff person, assigned to it, who was not successful at it.
So, if you would go back to the page where it shows the Q1 total earned media...
Yes.
...dollars.
Uh-huh.
Because you've got print at thirteen thousand five hundred, you've got fifty-four hundred in broadcast, four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars in digital value.
Yes.
And five-hundred-five thousand dollars worth of total value. Is that a good number for the first quarter?
It's a fabulous number. It's a fantastic, because our goal is a million for the year. So, we did very, very well that first quarter. And we did very well a year ago at that particular first quarter, the October, November, December, because there's really good things happening.
So, yes, it's a good number.
It's a good number.
So, I guess my next question is, I'm looking at your report from last year, same period last year, and you had thirty-seven thousand dollars in print value versus thirteen this year. You had ten thousand in broadcast versus five this year. You had a million five in digital versus four-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. And that total value was one-point-five-one-three million dollars versus five-hundred-five this year. So, you know, we...
We blew it out of the park last year. It was all because we had three different launches on Parade.com, and the value of that is extremely high. They came here, they stayed, they stayed at Texas Heritage Cabs, Alona Pruitt's Place. They loved it. They loved their experience in Granberry. That was one of those years that we may never get again. We may never get again, because it's, you know, you've gotta have the quality experience to even influence them to come in the first place. And they came, and they loved it. And that was great. That was a banner year.
Is it a yes or a no? So, it was a good year?
It was a kickbutt year. It was a great year.
But we've gone backwards. And like I said, I don't know what these numbers mean. What, does it turn into money? Does it turn into bitcoins? Where are we going with this?
No, it doesn't turn into money. But what it turns into is the fact that we get media and marketing messages that we've not written a check for. So, which is typical in the DMO, CBB, Destination Marketing world, you try to have communications and media PR relations staff that know how to influence social influencers. Social influencers could be, especially these days, folks who write blogs, and they have these great followings. You get people to come to your community and experience, and they write about it. Either they, like the Good Morning Texas, that's broadcast. The, we had a radio show last year that did something, that's broadcast. If we can get, we had Southern Living Magazine did an article, that's the print. Those feature articles are so valuable to us, because it's something that we can't afford to purchase. And so, that's why we work that angle as well as adding to it the paid media that we contract for, the digital, the print, the broadcast. So, if you add it all together, it's like adding, right now, it's like adding another half a million dollars to our budget. But you've not had to pay for the half a million dollars. You use your social influencers and your travel writers and editors to come and experience and write.
But if you look at, let me stop you there.
Okay.
I really wanna condense this down, so we're not here all night. Your enthusiasm is off the charts. So, but when you talk about social media and influencers and those type things, and yet, the numbers from last year versus this year on Facebook and Snapchat and Twitter, they're all about a third of what they were a year ago.
We're not even doing Snapchat now.
Well, I don't know. What is this?
You're probably looking at Twitter.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and Facebook.
But I'm looking at Facebook. We had twenty-seven thousand followers last year. We have eleven this year. So, again, I'm looking for logic in the statements here. And I'm not, I'm not smart on social media at all. I mean, everybody in this room that follows me on Facebook has got the most boring existence on the planet. But I'm just trying to follow the logic here in what the value is. And it seems like you're saying we're making all this progress, and yet, the numbers are down.
We are. But see, with social media, it's not always a building thing, because people opt out. They might follow, visit Granberry or Granberry for a while, because they have an interest in Granberry. And maybe they're bringing a wedding or having a special celebration or having a reunion. So, they're following it, and they're really engaged in what's happening. And then their interest can move on to something else. And so, it's not like a database where you keep getting your, your numbers higher and higher and higher, because more people end up being on your database. And they never drop out. In this case, it's more fluid.
So, effectively, what do these numbers mean, then? You're saying you can't rely on, you can't, there is no base. So, what do they, what do they even mean?
The numbers, the total?
The followers. When you're saying they come in, they come out, what does it mean?
It means they're paying attention to our messages. So, for that first quarter, we had eleven thousand four hundred...
But when, when they drop off, does that mean they're ignoring, they don't care about us anymore?
Care about us anymore.
Do we, do we say, how many people like us, and we feel good? And when they don't, we feel bad?
It's just another barometer. It's just another way of measuring. We try to measure, probably some cases, you feel like you're measuring too many things, is another indicator. If we only had three hundred followers, we'd be thinking, we'd be sad. You know, we'd be thinking, we're not doing anything to influence people if only three hundred people are paying attention to our messages. So, there are some times it's gonna be up, it's gonna be down, but there are trends. They're, they're not anything to, it's not the be-all, end-all of something, because they're gonna change, because they're trends. And then, we could look at quarter two, and it could be significantly up, or it could be down again. But we just follow. We just pay attention to it, and we measure it. And so, what, we're probably gonna start to measure some things a different way, because it's important to us to track, like you have the, the marketing impact report. We've never really produced a marketing impact report like that before, but we thought it was good to, to share what we're looking at and what it means. Not everything we do is gonna be a success, but by God, we want it to. And we're gonna try real hard for it to be successful, but if it's not, we're not gonna keep kicking a down horse. We'll reevaluate, and we'll adjust. We try to also do things that we can track. So, that's why in some of our digital work we do, we're able to track. We're able from a digital ad to see how many people then click to our website, because that's important for us.
Good. Like I said, we're, I'm really trying to keep this brief, so I don't give a blow.
Hey, I'll quit talking. Ask away.
But the, I've been getting a lot of feedback from your stakeholders that you mentioned earlier. You're saying you may have a concerted effort to reach out to them. And you can see several of them here. They've got concerns about occupancy rates. Since the inception of this organization, we heard heads and beds, heads and beds, heads and beds. And that's all they care about, heads and beds. And the fact that, that the feedback I'm getting from some of these folks is that their concerns are being completely dismissed is concerning to me. And I hope they would be concerning to you at some point.
They are. They are concerning to me. I've had, visited these properties individually in the past. I know they've had some meetings to get together, and I think there was a meeting just this week, just yesterday, with some of my board members. And we have, we want to collaborate on things, not be adversarial, one way, shape, or form. That's why I'm hoping we could build a forum where we can kinda talk about this.
Well, they're right, they're right here.
I know, I know where they are. And they're all very nice people, really. I've visited with them all. Who did this, who did the sputter?
Okay, so, I would hope that at some point, you'd reach out to them. And I'm hoping the feedback we get going forward is much more positive. On the, on the finance, and please let me talk. On the financial side, on your, on, at the balance sheet, and the profit and loss, and those type of things, please, put the column that shows the budget. So, for a quarter of the way through the year, you did it the last two years, and yet, this year, it's off. That's a real easy way to see where we're scaled for the year. Okay? And so, for a guy that looks at these numbers, it's a real, if I don't know what the budget is, I don't know if you spent, you know, twenty-five dollars here, if that was over budget, or if we're just barely getting into it. So, if you'll do that for me, that would be great.
I'd be happy to, yeah. Sure.
And I think my last item is, we really need that space downstairs?
I know.
And I talked to you about this a year and a half ago, because that's when you were supposed to be out of here. And it was, well, we're looking for space, and we didn't realize how hard it was gonna be to find it. Those are private business problems. And in your private business, every, every hotelier, every private business, including myself, we all have those issues. But a year and a half after, we have this discussion, and we're still down there. And we're busting at the seams in this building. It would be really nice if we could get that thing going and allow the city employees to breathe here.
The project is underway. That's all I can say. I might have a board member who might want to address it instead of me. But we are, we have, we have obtained space. We're working with the contractor bids, and we're hoping, once that gets started, we'll be away in sixty days.
I think that would be a great answer.
And we're happy. I mean, we've been so happy here, and we appreciate it. And we know we've taken up space. And we need more space, because sometimes we have two people sitting at a desk, and one of them's running an extension cord, you know, to an outlet somewhere. We need the space. You need the space. Thank you for allowing us to stay as long as we have. The, the team in this building is fabulous, and we've enjoyed being here, but we know we need to go. But finally, this space came available that's worthy of where to put a visitor's center location. That wasn't available to us until January, but we procured it. We're under lease. We're moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Council, any more questions for Teresa? I will say, I think, Mr. Mobley, I was gonna have you just kinda go over the profits and loss, budget, performance, but just, it's one-fifty-nine, one-seventy-six is the total expense spent, right, on your profit and budget performance here?
Oh, you're talking my, my first quarter? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I don't know.
First quarter, total here?
It's what's in your report.
It's what's in your report. Yeah, you went off script there, but this is what we've been looking at all week. And I'm not gonna have you spell out every bit of that on there, but, you know, it's got income, loss, profit, expenses, financial administration, general, destination marketing, everything.
Our total expense spent so far, Q1 was one-fifty-nine, one-seventy-six, yes.
For that total year?
For the first quarter, first fiscal quarter, yes. We're still in the year.
Okay. Our city manager has a question for you.
On the star report that you got listed in here, it's quite concerning to me, because I know that our occupancy rates throughout the year are not sixty-three point five percent. But that's what this graph shows. I know that, you know, some of our hotels have very low attendance during periods of the year. And I was just wondering if you could help me address that chart.
Well, you want the chart? Because I've got my full star report, and I could provide a full star report to all of you. I'll put it in your...
Well, this star report would make me think it's time to build a hotel here.
I'm sorry?
If I, if I was a hotelier, and I saw this report, I would think I need to invest in a hotel here and buy, come and build a hotel, because it looks like you're over sixty percent capacity throughout the year.
Year-to-date, sixty-three point five percent. So, that was my January through December. Sixty-three point two percent, January through December, that was the average occupancy, yes. I have it broken down even further by October, November, and December. But that was the annual occupancy based on the star report. And then, we always compare it to Texas, and then the ADR, average daily rate...
Yeah, I got it.
...for the twelve months.
Okay. I know that we had a busy or a banner October.
We did.
And that would probably skew that a little bit, but I'm very cautious of, just looking at that. I'd hope somebody would look deeper before they...
Me, too.
...buy a ten-million-dollar building, new hotel.
No, I totally agree with you. I would want them to see the full report, so they could see what happens every, every month. But that is the year-to-date, January through December.
Thank you.
Clear. Councilman Couch?
I would just like to attest to the, the hard work that the board has done on the location of the new facility. And it's, it's the gateway into downtown. And, you know, there's been different task force putting that all together. And, believe me, there's hours and hours and hours that are, are being spent by our board members and certainly the staff. So, I appreciate your presentation tonight, Teresa.
Well, you're welcome. And we really do want to get into our new space for a lot of reasons. And we really do want to give you your space back. And again, I still thank you for allowing us to stay as long as we have. Chris has been more than accommodating when I shared our challenges and told, as soon as we knew he'd know.
Council, any more questions, concerns, or whatever? Teresa, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
We always look forward to this report, and...
Thank you so much, and thank you all, Council.
Once again, Council, that was a report, no action there. So, we'll move down to item number nine. Consider approval of the Harbor Lakes Lift Station, number thirty-two fence enclosure options, and determine the financial consideration. I'm gonna turn this over to our city manager, Chris Kaufman.
Thank you, sir, Mayor, Council. As your memo states, we've got a fence that surrounds the lift station right off of Harbor Lakes Drive in the Harbor Lakes subdivision. There's a picture of it there, and it's in relatively good shape. However, the Harbor Lakes HOA has requested an upgrade to the current fence enclosure to meet or match the current building requirements. The current requirements for a fence require a stone column every twenty-five feet. And so, we've been working on this quite some time, and we got some preliminary quotes from a couple of contractors, and they were well over the amount that I felt comfortable doing anything with. So, we engaged Terry Cone, architect, to put together some scenarios of three different types of fencing that could be put up around that structure. And he put together some probable opinion of cost for us here. And we have not advertised this, but if we needed to do that, we would certainly be able to move forward. But I wanted to bring this to you all tonight to let you see the different pricing for the different types of fences. There's stone columns, wood panels, a mow strip, and a gate. That's Exhibit F, and that's ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This is a large fence. It's about a sixty-by-sixty area. And the alternate two would be a stone column and fence with a CMU back up and gate, which is much more expensive at a hundred and thirty, oh, just a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Then, alternate two was a pre-cash, kind of a tilt-wall fence, about seventy-two thousand dollars. You know, with the prices the way they are, we, we do not have this money in our current budget. And financial considerations being as they are, I would recommend that if y'all want us to move forward with this, we would put it in, into the paperwork to budget for it in our next budget cycle. Unless you want to do something other than that, that's what we would recommend. But I wanted to bring this to you, because the HOA has been very patient, waiting for us to respond. And we finally engaged the architect to do it, because it was, we began to see how much money it was gonna cost. And we need to have it designed beneath the code. So, these, these folks that build these fences would have the, all the liability and workers' comp that's required by law. Obviously, I think an individual went out and hired a company, a landscape company to build a fence in their backyard. We'll be able to get things a whole lot cheaper than we're able to. But we do have state law requirements, and it requires it to be designed by an architect or engineer. And it needs to be bid out properly and receive bids and award bids. So, we could do a couple of things. I know in staff meeting, we talked about maybe using the existing fence and just putting some columns in there and getting a quote to do that. And we could certainly facilitate getting a quote in that direction as well. But the way we did it was a new fence the whole way. And so, that's... And, uh, so that's kinda where we're at. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Rick's here if you need anything, and so is Mr. Cone. So we'd be glad to help with any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Councilman Allen?
That's a sample. I know, but is that seventy-two thousand?
That'd be about seventy-two thousand.
At least.
But it's concrete.
It's concrete, yeah. If I was gonna do it, I'd do it that way. You never had to, we're about painting it or anything else. Budget's a good deal for next year.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
At seventy-one-four, that's, uh, three hundred dollars a foot. And I'll ask Mr. Cone, is, is, is that about right for something done for the city? Three hundred dollars a foot for that pre-cast? I'm sorry, so at seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars, at two hundred and forty feet, you said it was a sixty-by-sixty, right?
Believe so.
So, with a gate? That's about three hundred, three hundred dollars a foot. Is that normal?
That's the tilt-wall fence.
Yes, that's a, a pre-cast concrete fence system. And, uh, uh, all of these three, uh, uh, alternates that we looked at had priced by a general contractor based on, uh, city requirements for insurance and all, all those kinds of things. And, uh, those are the numbers that, that they came up with. That, that number that we're, you're talking about came directly from a fence company that produces that type of fence. Uh, so, yeah, there, it's somewhat expensive, but they require piers. And it's eight foot tall. Now, it's a, it's taller than a normal, normal fence that you're gonna see around town. Uh, and there is some structural considerations because of the, of the height of it. And, uh, you know, have to have the piers, so we don't end up with, uh, tilting, um, columns and such.
Right, right.
So that's, I feel comfortable with those numbers based on the parameters that we have to work with.
Well, in, in your opinion, because one of the ideas was using the, the existing panels and just putting columns up?
We didn't really discuss that, uh, that option.
Staff, yeah. Would that be even worth looking at? When we, when you look at the long-term maintenance and those type of things?
Uh, it, it could be. The, uh, the condition of the existing wood fence, uh, is not all that good. I don't think you're gonna have that many more years of service out of that particular fence. I mean, it's okay, but it's not great. Uh, and, you know, wood, once it starts deteriorating. The, uh, the way that you would approach actually building a stone column, incorporated into that existing fence, I'd have to think about how you'd actually do that, uh, efficiently. But, uh, uh, it certainly could be done.
But as far as the maintenance, I mean, let's, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars and we use the existing panels. And you're saying in a couple of years, we'll have to go replace the panels?
My opinion is, uh, based on what I saw out there, that you're gonna be replacing those panels in, uh, probably the next five years, let's say, something like that.
Thank you.
Counsel? And I, we did discuss that in, in answering your question, Councilman Mobley. You know, uh, you could build these columns, put the metal nailers or the nailer that, that, you'd run through there. And if you do replace panels, it'd be when, when needed. I think we're doing the same thing around the, uh, water treatment plant. And we're using, if I'm not mistaken, we're using the existing lumber, the one, the lumber that's good. So we're gonna get the maximum use out of it. And I guess whenever some of that, one of that gets to where we can't use it anymore, we'll replace the panels. You know, that's what we're kinda looking at. I mean, yeah, we can go build a, a wall here and, and some of these walls may start deteriorating too. So it's just whatever we wanna do, counsel. But I would say that we'd wanna, I would recommend that we let the city manager, uh, sit down with the HOA, talk about the options, and then come back and look at what we could do and, uh, bring it back to see exactly what we wanna, what we wanna do there.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, there's even the option of, you know, the, the, the development right now has the fence with the red tips growing all the way around, and, you know, they would grow, of course, they'd, you know, have to be trimmed too. But that would also hide that, and all they're trying to do is make that look nice where that, uh, that lift station is and match kinda what the Harbor Lakes has there too, so. And if you notice, all the way around Harbor Lakes, they have the fencing with the red tips. That would keep people out of there and it would also, eventually when it grows up, would hide that, uh, lift station. Councilperson Reiner?
I was just gonna suggest that we go ahead and take Chris's advice and perhaps, uh, as you said, let's get some different ideas and put this on the, on the, on the light on him for next year's budget. It doesn't appear to need to be addressed immediately. And I think, I'm looking at this seventy-one thousand dollar number and that's exceedingly expensive to me for a fence. And I think there are some other options that we can consider, like you were discussing. So I would make a motion to put this on the agenda, or put this on the budget for next year.
So, we've got a motion to go ahead and put this on the budget for next year. And you wanna go ahead and add to, just to let our city manager follow up with other options?
Yes, sir.
One second, sir.
We have that and we have a second, but Councilman Couch? Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That's what we'll do, that's approved. Our next item is a final report of the total construction cost of the Downtown Square Streetscape project. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Kaufman also.
Thank you. You know, after the meeting we had about six weeks ago pertaining to this, and we appropriated enough money to pay the bills, we've since, uh, worked with the contractor and reduced the amount that we needed to pay them. We did that based on a couple of things. Find, a fine audit of the actual paving invoices and the actual location of where those additional costs for paving were associated. And so we were able to do some cost accounting to identify that, uh, most of the overages of our project were due to the waterline construction and the flex base and the additional pavement that it required. So as you can see on the memo, our approved bid and funding amount was two point, well, just say two point six million. And the net changes added to be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four sixty-two, which gave us a two point nine, three six million dollar project. And, um, so that's a little bit less, about sixty-nine thousand dollars less than the three point oh five million that, that we were thinking it was gonna be. So, altogether, the total cost of projects, about twelve point nine percent higher than what we originally approved. But, um, the reason for that is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of that project is, uh, additional cost for water lines. So, um, altogether, in staff meeting this week, we kinda did the, a mental exercise. If we were to just have done the, the waterline and not done any of the Streetscape project, it would've been close to half a million dollars. So there's about, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of paving that's included in that original bid that, uh, would reflect total, a total project for about half a million dollars. So we're able to utilize those funds that way. And I wanted to report to you, if we take out the, um, the water improvements were, for the cost overage, the total project would be at five point eight percent over budget, which is pretty tight when you consider, um, if you just put a quarter to a half inch extra asphalt everywhere we put asphalt, it would more than exceed the three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So, uh, that's a pretty, pretty, pretty tight project as far as quantities go. And I also wanna mention that Freezing Nichols worked closely with the city. And they invested in the excess of a hundred thousand dollars in in-kind contribution to help mitigate, uh, their lapse in engineering at the beginning of the project and assisted the city, uh, in our efforts to repair our business relationship on the project. So they, they, you know, stepped up to the plate. They started sending, uh, an onsite representative and documenting, uh, a whole bunch of things associated with inspection to ensure the project was being done the way it needed to be done. And had we had the cross-sections when we needed them, we wouldn't have ever got crossways with what was going on. But they did, uh, invest some time and effort to help us with all this. And, uh, there's really not any action needed at this time from the council. But, uh, we, we also put a letter of, uh, from Freezing Nichols that helps you understand their perspective of the timeline and the dates of everything that happened. And then we, more importantly, include, include some pictures of the waterline expiration. Some of those waterlines, when we started digging where they're supposed to be, we really just had to explore to find them, which caused us to tear up a whole lot more of the road base and the, and the sub-base areas that were needed. So that cost a lot of money. And there's some photos, you can see that if you scroll to the last picture, it would help. I think that's the, the very worst-case scenario that I saw, that, uh, that one, yeah. That one right there, you can see, you know, whenever they're figuring a bid amount, they're, they're figuring about a twelve to an eighteen-inch trough through there to replace the asphalt. And as you can see, uh, we had a whole lot more going on. There were pipes going underneath that pavement that we didn't even have a record of. And again, some of them are as old as eighty years old. Some of them were still active and weren't supposed to be, and we didn't know they were. So we had a lot of, uh, fun tracking all that down. And there's just no way without good records, uh, at City Hall or at the service center, that those pipelines are there. So now we have a good set of asbelts. We'll memorialize those and keep those on hand for future generations. But, um, so we, we came a long way. And I feel a whole lot better about the project, uh, today after going through this. Went through kind of an audit trail, uh, with the engineer and, and the contractor to try to identify every, uh, little change and every little expenditure. And, um, so, you know, there's a lot of things that were, uh, a lot of things on that line item that we looked at last time were over budget, and there was a lot that was under budget. But all in all, um, the, the main differences were the water. That's kinda where I'm at. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and, uh, help you get clarity on anything you need on this report.
Chris, wasn't there also a little extra, I mean, not extra, but the, the, and we didn't talk about this in the staff, but didn't we have to put in some more, you know, additional electrical and things like that? And was there any gas lines, or was that all handled by the gas company?
The gas company took care of their own.
Okay.
Uh, the electric lines, um, they were, for the irrigation system or whatever, they were all part of the bid project.
Part of the bid, okay.
So we really didn't have any problems with electrical. Now, there is a, a forty thousand dollar savings mentioned in the letter from the engineer that we're gonna be getting, that we hadn't got yet, and I hadn't put into this equation. So there's still another forty thousand dollars that TexDOT is gonna, uh, supposedly waive some of the administration fees. So we won't have to pay that, which will reduce us even more, so. Overall, I think, uh, I'm glad to get it behind us, glad to get this thing finally, uh, down to where we understand what we exactly spent our money on. And, uh, confident we can move forward and take care of business.
So we're gonna receive an additional forty thousand, you said?
A discount. We're, you know, it'll be...
Do we need to put Ava on that, or are you gonna handle that?
She's already on it. She and I, mostly she, are on it.
All right, well, I feel good now.
We'll get it quick.
Very good. Counsel, any, any questions for Chris on the Streetscape?
Yeah, Mayor?
Councilman, uh, Couch?
Um, Chris, I just wanna make sure I understand this. It looks like about ninety, um, four percent of that overage was due to eighty-year-old water lines?
Yes.
And, uh, the rest of it was primarily due to, um, unit calculations?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, there was, uh, a lot of confusion about the overage, uh, in the paper. I mean, I had people saying, you were one point five million dollars over budget. Um, and, uh, I think it's unfortunate, because, um, the article in December alluded to, uh, council members driving up the cost on this. So that would've been an inaccurate assessment, wouldn't it, Chris?
Yes, nowhere in the breakdown. And in fact, I've got a, a statement from Freezing Nichols that, um, there was no cost associated with the administration, you know, dealing with council members or anything. So we're, we're good to go. No additional costs. The, the turn radius is on Bridge Street. Were a decision that we made to help eliminate the curbs, the cars from hitting the curbs on the turn radius. And that did cost us about eleven, eleven thousand and some change, a little under twelve thousand. But, um, you know, we had seventy-five thousand dollars built in for contingency. And, uh, we gobbled that up with, with water lines and what things. So, um, overall, you're at five point six percent over budget, which is well within industry tolerances. And, um, seventy-five thousand dollars isn't much contingency on a two point five million dollar project, so.
One thing was, uh...
Councilman Allen?
Thanks, sir. One thing was on the, uh, the Hattick's Conder. That wasn't in there either.
But that was a change order.
A change order.
And that's not included in the...
That's not included.
In the, in the overrun, that's right.
All right. Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Kaufman on this one? Thank you, Chris, for that report. Our next item is to consider the approval of a proposed building improvement. And, uh, this is the, the bathroom improvement. As you recall, we had this on the last council meeting. And we've got some, uh, a, a group of folks that were generously wanting to donate, uh, some funds to do this. And so, uh, I'm gonna let Chris talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I did meet with Lake Granbury Area Beautification Council. They expressed an interest in partnering with the city. As y'all know, they historically have an annual event and raise money to invest in our community to beautify things. And, um, so we talked about that. We talked about what they paid last year and what they were looking at paying this year. And as we talked about those issues, we talked about what they were gonna do for us this year at the city. They ate new benches on the square. They stepped up and wanna pay for those. And they also offered to, uh, uh, come in and redo those floors in those restrooms. And what they, they sent me a quote today. Uh, it adds up to twelve thousand, six hundred dollars of, uh, bead blasting the floors, or it says shot blast the floors to remove existing coating. And then they go in and install a new epoxy, uh, commercial or industrial-grade epoxy floor with polyurethane top coat. And then they also install, uh, an industrial-grade epoxy floor, polyurethane top coat with scuffing exist coating. So it's kind of a vinyl flex in there to keep you from having, uh, a slip problem. So they're offering to do all that stuff. And in the conversation, you know, they're also talking about paying for the new LED lights that our staff will install. And then they wanted to buy the motion-activated faucets, which our staff would install. So, you know, altogether, they're talking about spending about twenty-five thousand dollars on, on the city this year. And with that, I offered to ask the council if we would accept those donations and in a waiver or, um, you know, in a way to, to give back to them, waiver their future costs this year for the use of the conference center for their fundraiser to be able to raise more money to spend on the city next year. So, move. That happened quick. It's kind of a no-brainer. They spend their money on us, so, um, I think it's a good, a good gesture to give themselves back for a change.
So, did I hear we got a motion to go ahead and accept those funds and to also to, uh, allow the use of the conference center for their, their, uh, event?
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Couch? Counsel, any more discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So, um, I was the one that originally approached the LGBC in reference to this project. And, and when we were talking, they were just looking for some relief, uh, on the, on their jewel ball and the fault. And this is a group that, uh, kinda works in the background. They do, they've redone the La Row House, they've put a fountain in town, they're buying the benches for the square. They're talking about working on the median at the Loop and three seventy-seven, Business Three Seventy-seven. And then, of course, this bathroom project. They are looking for some relief. My understanding at, at the end of that discussion is they didn't want us to totally give them, uh, all the, the room and the ancillary, uh, items. They're just looking for the ancillaries. And they, they don't mind leasing the room. And we, as a council, we've struggled to kind of funnel revenue to the conference center, because the history of the conference center is, it used to be given to every organization that asked in town. It was given to them, and, and we dug ourselves a hole. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get back into that habit of giving this, this room away, because we're gonna, we're gonna fall back into that. And if we do it for this group, we'll, there will be a line at the conference center waiting to get that same deal. I approached them since, since we saw this. I approached them today and I said, well, my understanding was this, they are more than willing to pay for the, the room itself. What is, Chris, what is... What is, Chris, what is, or you may ask Kyle, what is the, what is the lease on the room itself?
Sixteen hundred and thirty dollars.
Sixteen hundred and thirty dollars. They, they're more than willing to do that in order to avoid problems going forward. So I would like to see the motion amended to include the sixteen hundred dollars.
Mr. Mobley, if you're telling me it's okay with them, I have no problem changing the motion and let them pay the sixteen hundred or whatever it is. If, you know, we don't wanna open the doors for other people, but on the other hand, when somebody comes in and gives you twenty-five thousand dollars worth of stuff, it's hard to turn around and say, here's your bill, but if you talk to them, that's different.
I think they see the big picture.
They do.
And understand it.
They see the big picture in this, and again, this is what that group's all about. It's all for the betterment of the community, and I think they're unselfish in that way.
Mayor, I will amend the motion, I'll re-strike.
We gotta amend the motion, we have, who had the second?
I'm good as well.
And I wanna say one more thing, too, that I wanna thank Councilman Couch, he's the one that put this on the agenda, and when we first started, he was a lot more money, and I'm glad we get it done, or getting it done, appreciate all the donations, and appreciate you putting it on there, Mr. Couch.
Absolutely.
So we've got an amended motion, and the second is amended, so I'm looking for a motion. Mobley, you wanna make a motion on that? A new motion?
Did we have an amended motion?
We got amended motion.
I did, I amended.
And we, all in favor of that?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we have the amended motion, so do we have a new motion?
Okay, mayor, I would make a motion that we only charge them for the room...
No, you don't have to...
...at the conference center only.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion then to accept the donations...
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And to accept the donations and to work with the beautification council on what they need out of the conference center, less the room itself.
Exactly.
And we got a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion on the bathrooms? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, looking forward to working with the Area Beautification Council on this.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Do we have a representative out there today?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next item was, item number twelve, was to consider, here we go again, adopting the ordinance eighteen seventeen to establish an ethics code, and I'm gonna kick this one off, counsel, you've had all the opportunities several times to review this, there's, from what I understand, no changes to the ethics code, we have it once again in front of us to make a motion on. Counsel, any more discussion on the ethics code that you had to look at?
I would be delighted...
To?
...to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
And I will second that.
We have a motion to adopt the ethics code as presented, and we have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion, counsel?
Mayor, I wanna thank...
Councilman Allen.
I wanna thank the staff, the city manager, and our attorney for working this up. I know it's been longer than some of us wanted, but with the light of everything going on, I think it's a great deal for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Any more discussion or comments?
And I wanna thank the council for their patience on this, I do appreciate that.
Thank you. That said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Counsel, at this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session that all our members are present, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, section five five one point oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, five five one oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property, five five one point oh seven four, personnel matters for the city manager's review. Counsel, we'll meet back in executive session, take five minutes or so to do whatever you gotta do and meet us back there. And counsel, as returned from executive session, there was no action taken in executive session. We now reconvene into open session. Counsel, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
After animated discussion in the back, I would like to make a motion that we give our illustrious city manager a four percent raise going forward.
I second that motion. We have a motion to give a four percent raise, and we have a second by Councilman Allen.
Does that mean we're gonna renew the contract?
No.
This is gonna go through the end of the week. But yes, we're gonna renew the contract.
But we need to, we need to put down, yeah, renew the contract with a four percent raise.
No extensions, old Chris, no extensions.
Do what? Okay. So we have a motion to renew the contract and with a four percent raise to our city manager for doing such a great job for us.
Amen.
And no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Counsel, any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.